Okay, we'll be back in session. So there was a, there was a motion to consent. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. The motion dies for lack of a second, so I'm gonna ask you one more time. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, there was a motion to pull number ten fifty. Oh, we're gonna do these individually.
Yeah, they were, they were pulled.
They were pulled individually. So there was a motion for number ten. Or, or, uh, can I get a motion?
We gotta move it to business still.
No.
We don't, okay.
Right, yeah. Well, I can clarify, um, Mr. President. The consent items are now closed. Uh, you had the five items that were administrative recommendations that Dr. Hyde pulled from the consent agenda. And those five need to be addressed tonight. I would suggest to you, uh, that you, unless there's any disagreement by board members, if there's no objection, the board can take them up as a priority item right now as you move into, uh, your regular business of the agenda. And, uh, you would need to take them up one at a time in numerical order.
Okay. Okay. So can I get a motion for number ten?
So moved. Second.
All right, roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Nay.
Dr. Hyde?
Nay.
Mrs. Quintana?
Okay, I'm a bit confused here now.
We're voting on number ten.
I know.
Do they say nay or?
An aye vote would approve the superintendent's recommendation to renew the contract, and a no vote would vote against that recommendation.
I'm gonna vote aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I need a motion for number fifteen.
So moved. Second.
I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now I need a motion for number sixteen.
So moved. Second.
Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now I need a motion for number seventeen.
So moved. Second.
I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now I need a motion for number nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're still in business. Superintendent's recommendation, approval of the Boys and Girls Club contract extension for 2018-19.
So moved.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. It's about the, um, insurance on the, uh, contract.
Who's here to answer that question?
Uh, the SIDS, uh, is now recommending that we, uh, coverage two million instead of a million on the contract. And I was just wondering, can we get that changed, if possible?
Yeah, I would, um, so I would suggest that you don't approve it tonight until that insurance gets approved, because if they cannot make the $2 million coverage, then we cannot have them under our policy, or we'll be liable for that difference.
Can, can you, um, get with John?
Yeah.
Can you get with John?
Yeah, can you, can you, uh, so what do you want to do with the motion? We have, we're in discussion now. We have a motion made and seconded.
Can they approve it pending the change in insurance? So I would, um, suggest that you make a, a motion to approve it pending the change in insurance according to what we were, um, advised to do. And then if they cannot provide that, then we do not continue with relationship with Boys and Girls Club.
So, so who made the motion?
Dave.
So you can amend your motion to say that.
Or another board member also could make a motion to amend.
Rola, may I?
I make a motion to amend it, uh, to $2 million. And if we can't, um, go further with it, then we just drop it.
So can I suggest some wording for you?
Please.
It sounds like you, you want to make a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation for the Boy, uh, Boys and Girls Club contract contingent upon, uh, Boys and Girls Club's acceptance of increased insurance, um...
Increased insurance.
Insurance coverage.
Two million.
In accordance with Sid Sip's recommendations.
Sip Sip's recommendation of the Superintendent's Boys Club of $2 million. Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Do I need a second?
You do, yes.
Second.
Hey, second.
Okay. So now you need to vote on that. And if that carries, then that is now, that motion amended is the one that you would vote on. So your first?
Voting on the amendment first?
Correct.
Okay. So can I have a motion to, oh?
We already did. Discussion.
We're in discussion?
Yeah. Could, could you state the motion, please? Okay, now you can.
So the motion is to approve the recommendation for the Boys and Girls Club contract for the year 2018 through 2019 with, uh, a $2 million insurance instead of $1 million. If they can't, if Sid Sip can't make the $2 million, then the, then this approval will not happen. Okay? You understand it? Okay. Any other discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
1.2 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to increase funds for Approved District Vendor Employment Matters LLC.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, point of order. I believe that, uh, you still have a pending motion. So the, what the board voted on, you now have an amended motion to approve the recommendation on the Boys and Girls Club contract. So before you move to your next item, you should, you should, uh, vote on that motion.
Okay, we didn't have a second on that last one, so let's back up to, uh...
Well, it's been, uh, it's, it's, it's been amended and it's properly seconded. It's that the amended motion is now before the board.
Okay. So any discussion on the amended motion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now let's move on to 1.2 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to increase funds for Approved District Vendor Employment Matters LLC.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.3 Superintendent's recommendation, Adams County School District 14 and District 14 Classroom Teachers Association, CTA negotiations approval.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.4 Superintendent's recommendation, Adams County School District 14 and District 14 Colorado Classified School Employees Association, CCSEA negotiations approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.5 Superintendent's recommendation, Adams County School District 14 Support and Technical Compensation Package Approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Quintana? Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.6 Superintendent's recommendation, Adams County School District 14 Administrator Compensation Package Approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.7 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to contract with Mount St. Vincent Home to provide educational and, and therapeutic interventions for students with significant emotional disabilities.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.8 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to increase funds to the contract with American Logistics Company for incidental transportation services for the 2017-18 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.9 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to increase funds to the contract with the Joshua School to provide emotional and therapeutic interventions for students with autism for the extended school year services through June the 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.10 Superintendent's recommendation, approval for out-of-state travel to Naperville, Illinois to attend positive behavioral interventions and support trainings on July the 17th through the 19th of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
No.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Moving on to 1.11 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to contract with Susan Resnick Consulting LLC for mathematic coaching.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I thought we were trying to get some more information, um, about what she was going to do. And we were going to possibly have her appear before us to, uh, fill us in a little bit on what we expected from her. I, that was my recollection from the study group. Um, so, uh, I guess that didn't happen. Um... So I guess that's where we are with it, right? We just remember during the study group, we were trying to get some more information, uh, either from her or about her in terms of her duties and what was going to happen and so forth.
Uh, does anybody else recollect that?
Yes.
So we didn't get it?
It was provided in, um...
The, her paperwork of what she done, but we asked for her to come and speak to us. We wanted to ask her questions.
What I recollect is that the data was, um, going to be shared, um, at the next board meeting.
Well, the, her, her pay slips and what she did and all that was in the Friday's update. That's true, but as far as, um, asking her questions, finding out what is her, what is she gonna do in the district, it's totally different. This is saying just math, and the Friday updates had her all over the place. Totally different.
Uh, Mr. Farrell, if we, uh, if the board were to vote this down now, could we then, because we can't table it, because we now have a motion on the, on the floor, right? So we either have to vote on it, and if we were to vote it down, then we could raise it again at the next meeting, right? Or after we've heard from the woman.
It could be presented again.
Right.
But it has been moved and seconded.
Yeah.
May I, um, add some details regarding this specific superintendent's rec, um, recommendation? This is regarding the professional development for the, um, 18-19 school year. And I don't have the contract in front of me. Um, which, I don't know if it was included in the updates. But I believe if my memory, um, is correct, it is for building level, coaching at every elementary campus, that's seven buildings, every quarter, total of 28 coaching days. And one professional development day at the beginning of the school year with two consultants. That is what this contract entails.
So we don't have a contract? So, um... We, we wanna, you wanna give her $32,000? Thirty-two up to $35,000 that we can, um, with no contract in front of us to look at? And we can, um, actually, if I'm not mistaken, I heard principals saying that they can use math intervention and reading, and we can have people in the buildings in the district for the whole year. And, um, from my understanding, they can be there for the whole year instead of somebody just popping in and popping out. And, um, that's just my understanding, so...
If we were to add, I mean, I'm just guesstimating, uh, a math person at every building, seven elementary campuses, and I'm just speaking to the elementary, at approximately between pay and, and benefits, um, I'm gonna go at the, you know, middle end at, um, $50,000 to $60,000. You're looking at $60,000 times seven, so...
That's, uh, $420,000. If you did the other parts to it, you add a little more to that. And if I'm not mistaken, the, um, the state governor did add $400-plus dollars to every student, which would make it an extra million to 400 to $2 million. So we're not talking about, we don't have money to take care of our students. The problem is what are, we wanna do as a district. So it's not about the money. We, the, the governor added a little extra $2 million. And if I'm not mistaken, um, the district has $1 million probably for instructional. So we have money to, to pay reading and math, but we talking about a person to come in the district for PD and, and personal development.
Coaching.
Coaching. We can, we got math coaches here in the district. Let's, let's pay for our own. Let's take care of our own. Let's give our money to our own. That's, that's just me speaking.
I'm just advocating for the professional development that I believe that we can use at the elementary level. So, um, I respect whatever decision you make as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
No.
Dr. Hyde?
No.
Mrs. Quintana?
No.
Mr. Rola?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Moving on to 1.12 Superintendent's recommendation, approval to, for allocation of funds to increase 10 table of authorized personnel for 20.5 full-time employee K2 reading paraprofessional positions.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Since we're talking about pairs, and I brought it up earlier, um, superintendent, can we get a, a estimate? When can we find out about? Um, between 20 to 12 pairs for the middle schools? And, well, not all to the middle schools, 12. But we don't have pairs going to our third, fourth, and fifth graders at the elementary schools. We only got them going through K through 2 here in this, um, superintendent recommendation. We don't have none going to 3, 4, and 5 in none of the elementary schools. And we don't, and we don't have none, which, um, at least six can go to both middle schools. So can we, um, um, get a recommendations, superintendent recommendation on that, please?
Is it, uh, 20 pairs, is that what you said?
Um, 12 for both middle, 6 and 6 for, um, Kearney Middle School, Adam City Middle School. And then I'm not sure how many are used from 3, 4, and 5 for all the middle schools, elementary schools. I'm not sure how many there are used for that.
Can I, can I, um...
Yeah, 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 help me out.
Okay, so I hear you what you're saying, but that doesn't happen under this recommendation. This recommendation are these, for, for these paraprofessionals. So what I'm gonna ask you to do is to bring that up under communication.
But, but...
And let's make a superintendent's rec for that, if that's what you wanna do.
I gotta write, I gotta remember that, 'cause last time you cut me off.
Here's my question on, on these. Are we putting these on permanently, or are they gonna be time-sheeted?
These are, these are, if I'm correct, these are individuals that, I'm sorry. If I'm correct, these are not time-sheeted. These are pairs that are gonna be with us full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time.
Uh, yeah, but, but I mean, every day, every day, half a day here. Am I correct, Ms. Burgos, is that what?
That's correct. They would be on a payroll for, um, .5, 20 at .5, assigned to the schools specifically. Remember once and again, it's about trying to grow our, um, career to, um, teacher pipeline. And we're hoping that the individuals that fill these positions also commit to attending university, um, with our partner, I believe it's Northern Colorado Universities, to become our future teachers.
Okay, I was just wondering to make sure, you know, 'cause if they're time-sheeted, they're really not employees.
Yeah. They are, they, I believe they're on payroll. That's the way we calculated the expense.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm a second to ask and pull you right there.
Okay. So once again, approval for the allocation of funds to increase 10 table of authorized personnel for 20.5 full-time employee K2 reading paraprofessional positions has been properly motioned and seconded. We're in discussion. There any other discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.13 Superintendent's recommendation, approval for allocation of funds to increase 1.0 table of authorized personnel for principal coach.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 1.14 Superintendent's recommendation, approval for allocation of funds to increase 1.0 early literacy teacher on special assignment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. It's, um, this early literacy, is this gonna be in this building or is this gonna be in, uh, uh, one of the schools or something?
This individual works, um, at the district, but they support the schools through professional development to our teachers and modeling. And I believe we added some language, the modeling that was requested by Dr. Hyde, uh, to our, um, elementary schools. In addition, they also provide support with assessment, dibbles, when, um, a second assessment is requested, because the first one is questionable. And their, is, yes, that is what this individual will do.
So, Ms. Burgos, so what's the difference between the, um, the literacy intervention person that's at a school compared to this TOECA person? I'm, I'm confused.
That, that TOECA person gets all the professional development from CDE and then supports it, it's like, um, train-the-trainer model, and then supports our building-based coaches. We call them instructional coaches. So they provide that professional development for them as well. And then they branch out to teachers that request individual support.
So, so we don't have no literacy coaches at the elementaries in the middle schools?
I believe some middle schools may have with their FTEs. I believe Kearney, for example, used one of their FTEs for a literacy coach. But at the elementary level, we have instructional coaches that help with the math and the reading. So they provided the professional development here, and they support their teachers with, um...
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, I'm cool.
Okay. So we have a, we have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Is there any other discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to one point one-five Superintendent's recommendation, approval for an increase in table of authorized personnel for a one point zero full-time employee for a director of teaching and learning. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Now who is the district's current teaching and learning director?
Currently?
Currently, right. As currently, currently as we speaking right now, who is that person?
We don't call it director of teaching and learning. Right now we call it, it's the secondary. That would be the person that's the director of secondary education. And then we don't have a director of elementary education and that's what we hadn't filled for about two years. So we're sort of bringing that back, but we're not calling them elementary and secondary. We call them director of schools because we're giving them different assignments, various schools.
And who was this person before?
When I came here, there was, we didn't have that position in elementary. I mean, we hadn't filled it, so I don't know who was here before I got here. The person's name.
But it was, it was called secondary director, director of secondary? And who was in that position?
He, that's what he said. They didn't have one.
Oh, even then you did? Well, you had the position, the name of the position, but it was empty?
Right.
Yes.
Like a year ago or whatever?
Again, the director of elementary education was the title of the position, but it was never filled.
Okay, so. Okay?
No, I'm not okay, but because that's what, um, the past administration kept us with a organizational chart. And now with all this swapping and switching because, um, I'm, 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 I just need to see. Because you're saying this position is from K through twelve and Ms. Burgos was doing this, right?
Ms. Burgos is the chief academic officer and she is up here. Underneath her, there should be an elementary and a secondary. She has been doing the chief academic officer and the elementary for the past two years. And right now I'm trying to straight out, as you said, the organizational chart, which I said I'd give to you by the end of the month, which is next week. And I'm trying to straighten out so that we have the correct support needed to get the schools to where you want.
Under?
Under personnel.
Okay, so, so there's a need to
I don't want to disrespect.
Move into executive session under twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for what is personnel, Jonathan? Is that C?
Just a minute.
Paragraph F.
Okay, there's a motion to move into executive session under twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parenz four, parenz F. Legal advice board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of personnel. I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in session. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to clarify. My motion was not to go into executive session under personnel. We needed legal advice on a matter. And I, I referenced it incorrectly. So I'd like the motion to, the correction to be twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parenz four, parenz B. Legal advice board to conference with an attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific matters.
And you don't need to have another motion for that? If, if the board could accept your correction of the record by acclamation?
Okay.
I accept.
I accept. Okay, thank you.
Are we still in discussion?
We're still in discussion.
Superintendent, I have a question about this position. Is this position open? Is it gonna be posted to the public?
This position, the first thing I'm gonna do is, as I said in my reorg chart, if I have people in this building that I can move around, I will look there first. I'm gonna try to fill as many as I can. Whatever positions are open, then it would be posted.
So that means no, it's not gonna be posted to the public?
I'm gonna try to fill from within if I can.
So you try, okay, so you gonna try to fill it within? Okay, all right.
Okay. Are there any discuss, any other discussion? Roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Moving on to one point one-six Superintendent's recommendation per policy DJ, approval for new bus security camera purchase from REI.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to one point one-seven Superintendent's recommendation, approval of conversion of instructional coach position to assistant principal position at Lester Arnold High School.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, Monica, please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Now, under communication. Now we'll move into communication.
Doctor, I can go first.
Oh, okay, Dr. Hyde, do you have any communication for?
What was? It was so many hours ago. What was it that we were putting off till there was a specific item that we talked about?
Harvest has a motion. Harvest has a motion.
Okay, uh, this is under general communication. I'll pass at this moment.
Mrs. Quintana?
No, we've talked enough.
We've talked enough. Mr. Thomas?
How about me? I'm my stepchild. Go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Rola.
Okay, yeah, I do have some. I'd like to set a date for us to have a steady session with turnaround. This coming in and trying to do it in forty-five minutes or a half hour isn't cutting it. So I think we have to have at least a steady session, two hours long. Because every time we've talked about turnaround, it's always been a forty-five minutes or an hour and we never really get anything done. So I would just like to, for, if we get a hold of Lisa and get a hold of Randy and set up a date where we can have a couple hours to get our answers done. So, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I agree.
So I guess what we need to do is we need to get, we need to get a hold of Randy and Lisa and find out when they're available. And then what dates do we have available?
Well, how come, how come we have to get with, um, with Lisa and Randy? We should get with staff. They should be able to tell us where we at
Whatever.
with turnaround. They should be able to give us a indication of what's going on. Where's the data at today? We don't have to get with them all the time. They should be able to do they, to tell us what's going on. And we should be able to ask them questions.
Well, what are you asking for, Mr. Rola?
I just wanna know where we're at realistically. You know, do we have the data that they need to get us? Are we looking good? Is there something that we gotta do to pick up so we can? Because before we know it, September will be here. Now we said, the older you get, the more time flies. And I'm getting older.
Mr. Archuleta, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I, I think it would be good. I mean, either way, I think our team needs to give you an update. And I think like Lisa Meller was here and she's gonna be meeting with the high school. They presented some of their data that, I mean, I think they need to share with us and you can ask any kind of questions you want. You could probably have Lisa there too because, you know, she was, she's the one that's gonna go ask them about their data anyway. And I think we did that last time where we got together with her. But it would be the same thing almost, but, you know, I think that you do need members of our team so that you know exactly what the high schools doing, middle schools are doing, and others. Whatever questions you have that we can answer for you.
Okay.
So I would like to have our team there. I mean, I definitely would.
So when do you wanna do it? Today's the twenty-second.
Don't we got something Thursday?
Do we have a study session on cer, on this Thursday?
For the advisory committees.
Part thirty we do.
May I say that we did make an appointment yesterday to have us on the board agenda for the next? To have us on the board agenda for the next board meeting? Because my understanding was that we can't have it during our Thursday work-study sessions, that we would have to do our presentation during a regular board meeting. So we are requested to schedule that for the next board meeting, two weeks from today. However, you know, Thursday allows us for more conversation, interaction. That's up to you.
What do you wanna do? Want to do it Thursday?
I don't care. We're done with everything realistically. Next Tuesday? I mean, every night should be open. Next Tuesday? We go next Tuesday.
Do it next Tuesday? So can we make that happen, Monica? Can we schedule it for next Tuesday? Can you notice?
So next Tuesday would be
Graduation.
Also fifth grade continuation and Kearney Middle School's continuation ceremony.
At what time?
It would be, one is at five-thirty and the other's at six-thirty.
Thirty-first, okay.
Five-thirty and what?
Five-thirty and six-thirty.
For what day? Oh, yeah.
Twenty, go to June.
Go to where?
June.
So when, when in June?
Tuesday.
On a Tuesday? So we got the fifth, the twelfth, the nineteenth?
The sooner the better.
So Thursday, the thirty-first is not an agenda prep study?
Oh, is that, but is that a, is that a fifth week? Are we meeting with the city? That's it, no.
On a Thursday, we meet with the city on Mondays.
So, okay, that's fine with me.
Want to do it on thirty-first? Dr. Hyde, are you available on thirty-first?
I am. What, what time are we talking about?
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Ms. Quintana?
Sure.
Mr. Rola?
It's fine with me.
So, so can we schedule that for four-thirty? On the thirty-first of May?
Then the other thing I have to bring out, I'm on a roll here. One of the things is I was sitting there and we were listening to that little study session with their, and we're talking about things that aren't, that we don't hear about. And I think part of it is our fault. Because we don't put timelines on it. We don't hold people accountable. We bring it up and then maybe we'll think about it a month later. Where we should have it, where we should say, you know, this is what we want and let's give them whatever time. But I think we gotta follow through on our timelines if we're going to do something like this. So we know what we're doing. Just suggestion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I know we're stacking stuff up here, but I think we really, in order to be proactive, we've got to start thinking about how the board's gonna respond to charter schools. And I guess step one, Superintendent, would be, has anybody to date submitted a letter of intent for filing a charter school application?
Not that I know of.
Okay, I mean, they have to, I believe they file it with you. So would you let us know as soon as, if, because they have to, my understanding is if a charter school wants to come into the district, they have to file a letter of intent at least thirty days prior to their application. And I think we need to have somebody give us a primer on the, what our options are. And I'd like to know ahead of time. So, uh, rather than, yes, yeah, with thumbs up for?
I can do that.
You can do that. Okay, so.
I'm probably not the only one around here, but I can definitely.
Yeah, but we still need, had to have the, it spelled out to us. So again, that's another meeting. How much time do you think is appropriate?
It's, it's not a, it's not that complicated. I'd say thirty minutes or an hour, one hour.
Could we piggyback it onto that same meeting?
Sure.
Is that okay with everybody?
On the thirty-first?
Don't have a problem with it.
Ms. Quintana, you have anything?
Nope.
So, so I have a few things. First of all, I'd like, like to set up a meeting with the, uh, with CTA, with your, with all of the CTA representatives for as soon as possible. So can you guys set some dates?
Yeah, I'm not sure they're really interested anymore. I'll check with them.
Okay. When can I expect an answer? Pardon me?
Hold on. Professional. Excuse, excuse me. Excuse me, Ms. McDowell, can you come to the podium, please?
Oh, you want me up there now? I don't know how right now. Yes, what would you like it to be about?
You know what, actually?
You're done? Okay, thanks.
Discussion with you. Does anybody else need a discussion with them?
You still doing, you still on?
I'm in communication, yes. Yes. So I'd like to just state that I had a meeting with the community members yesterday. Or was, I think it was yesterday. And, uh, and I, and it was about biliteracy and biliteracy in the fourth grade. And I know that the statement has been made that biliteracy in the fourth grade is gonna be put on pause. I don't, I don't believe that it needs to be put on pause. I think it needs to continue on in the fourth grade. What it looks like, I don't know what it looks like. I know that there are some things that need to happen. There's some things, you know, the Bueno Center helped us get a program started with their Literacy Squared program. And, and I don't know if that's the correct model for our kids right now. So there's gonna be some studies that are gonna be being done. But I personally believe that the biliteracy program in the fourth grade needs to continue. I'm gonna continue to have conversation with, with everybody as to my, my reasoning why. Because I think it's important for our kids, because our kids deserve to learn. So, um, I met with, with the parents and these were all different new parents that I haven't met with before. And I've been trying to outreach to parents from our community and I wanna listen to parents from our community. And I want to hear what they have to say and that's what they're saying. I mean, we've heard it, we've heard it, and we've heard it. And if we haven't listened to it, then shame on us. But, but I've heard it and I continue to hear it. So that's my position on biliteracy. Now, Mr. Thomas? You have a motion.
Two. Thursday in this room, Monica, can you somehow get it out that the Board of Education will be discussing the advisory committees of Adam City High School School? Important Improvement Advisory, also Accountability Accreditation Advisory, Climate and Culture Advisory Committee, and the Calendar Advisory Committee. The Board of Education on Thursday will be putting those together to get them done so we can start those advisory committees going as soon as possible. Also, I'd like to put the motion.
Posted like any other board meeting will be posted.
It was a study session. It wasn't supposed to be a board meeting. But do they run it on channel eight? Can they run it on channel eight? Can we do some extras, get some family in here? Can we get extra to get some? That's, that's whatever.
The purpose of Thursday was to kinda go through guidelines and structures and process.
We, we, we doing that, but we still like to get input. The board is still doing, but input is still good for us, you know?
So you want it on channel eight?
Channel eight? Whatever, whatever technology? Yeah, please, thank you. Also, um, the motion was to see if we can get those extra pairs in this school district. I think it's highly important that we do that.
You wanna see, you wanna see twelve to twenty pairs?
Um, twenty. High-end twenty, low-end twelve. High-end twenty, high-end twenty. No low-end, but high-end twenty.
Okay, so you want a, you want a superintendent's rec for twenty pairs?
Right, six and six to the middle schools and, um, three, four, and fifth graders, third, fourth, and fifth graders to the seven elementary schools. The rest goes to the elementary schools.
Does that take a motion, Jonathan?
Well, it, it would if you were gonna direct action. If you, if you're just expressing a desire that they would, staff would bring you a recommendation, that doesn't require a motion. I mean, you could certainly make a resolution if you want. I mean, you could certainly make a resolution if you wanted to make a more formal statement of board policy. But if, you know, if the, if the issue is just inviting, uh, action that the board could act on at a later date, I think you've done that.
Okay.
And is this in addition to the superintendent's recommendation 1.12 that we just voted on tonight?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, just clarifying, yeah.
Okay, what else did we have? Oh, so we have an action that we have to do on a Level 4 grievance. What's the board's, uh, prerogative with the Level 4 grievance, do we want to hear it? I recommend we hear it.
Uh, in the next board meeting.
It has to be done by the 12th.
That's the next board meeting.
Right. So do I need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion.
So, uh,
It could be stated affirmatively or negatively, however
I need a motion to hear the Level 4 grievance at our next board meeting.
Uh, by the June, by June 12th.
12th date, okay.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Who made that second, I, I couldn't hear.
Harvest. Harvest. That would be Harvest. So what we doing on, um, the pairs?
Hang on a second, we got a motion, and we got a motion.
And I, I have, so we've got a first and a second?
Yes.
I have a, a comment. Uh, Mr. Farrell, what is the, uh, lead time that we need to give uh, the person involved in that grievance? What kind of notice do we need to give that person of, that that grievance will be, uh, addressed?
Let me look, Dr. Hyde.
I thought it's a class action.
It's a different one.
Oh.
That's a different
Do we have two?
Boy, I haven't got that other one yet.
The negotiated agreement doesn't specify a, a minimum time of notice, so I would I would recommend that you, um, you know, schedule it as, determine a date that works for you as expeditiously as possible, and provide advance notice of that. What it, what it does specify is, and you are timely, you have to make the decision about whether or not you'll hear the grievance tonight, that's the motion before you, and you have to, have to have the hearing occur before your next regularly scheduled board meeting, which is June 12th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And i- is it correct that that person can participate in the executive session with us, or request, uh, public, um, airing?
It's just like a hearing.
Come on, make downs. Yeah, but you could
I know that that is addressed in here, I'm not finding it right now, I'll be happy to follow up with you unless I can, um, see it right away.
Well, why don't you just ask CTA? They probably know when their grievance time is.
Well, the question is about whether the, the hearing would be held in executive session. I believe that it would be a personnel executive session, um, but I'm not finding the documentation in the agreement on that.
Okay. So, uh, what's the date?
For what, the 12th?
No, we're gonna, we have to hear it by the 12th.
We can hear it on the 12th.
What, you want to hear it on the 12th? Now, what time? 4:30?
4:30.
So, so can we schedule that for, are you okay with 4:30 on the 12th? Dr. Hyde, are you okay with 4:30 on the 12th?
I am.
Mr. Rolla?
Just like you say, that we don't want to schedule anything else, because I don't want to be put in a rush, and don't want the individuals that are grieving to be in a rush, so we wanted to give all, make sure we give them plenty of time to present their case.
So between now and the 12th gives them probably like 10 days. So What gives them more than that? Gives them more than that, give them about two weeks.
No, what I'm saying is, put other things on your the agenda.
No, we'll just do that, we'll just do that.
Okay, that's, yeah.
So on the 12th at 4:30, we will hear that, uh, that grievance?
So you have a motion that's been, uh, seconded to hear the grievance. And you've come to an agreement on a date, so you need to have a vote, a roll call vote on, on whether it will be heard.
Okay, so, uh, can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?